Uh, meeting's ordered. Roll call, uh, Mr. Brett Towns.
Here.
Uh, and Eleanor Thompson.
Here.
And unpack Crowley, the chairman. We have a full board this morning. Notice was properly posted. We have first item is discussion of possible action about the minutes of March twentieth. Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt it. Except, that's, that's all.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all who in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I think we've got somebody still filling out an affidavit.
They should be ready to go.
Is that, is that Sparling?
Correct.
Okay. There are number, you're, you're number two on our docket. Forty-six, twenty-five, West Cut Circle in Edmond.
Yes, sir.
Your first step.
All right, and have you got that affidavit filled out?
Yes.
Oh, okay, we already got it.
So you should be ready if you'd like to come up here and take a seat.
Come up here, have you been before the board before?
No.
Okay. We're pretty informal here, but we have to follow the statute, so.
Interesting.
Uh, we touch your property, uh, on West Cut Circle in Edmond, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, what we'll, what we'll do is we'll listen to what you want to tell us about this piece of property first. Then we'll have the assessor talk about why he's assessed it at the value that, uh, he has. And then you will have an opportunity to respond to assessor.
All right.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's just start off with you to tell us.
Okay.
Everything you want us to know about this piece of property.
We recently purchased property last year, and I'm sure as a result of the sale, the assessment went up. We had an informal protest, they actually assessed it in excess of the sales price. The informal protest, they lowered it, but, uh, as we've done on our research, I think the assessment is still too high. I don't know how much of the information you want for your records, or I can just talk from any of your comments.
Everything that you presented to the informal, we have.
Okay, well, this wasn't presented to the informal.
Yeah, it wasn't presented at the informal, this is an appeal, so, uh, we don't consider evidence that was not presented at the informal. You understand that because there was a decision, the informal, you're appealing.
Yes, sir. Okay, well, that wasn't, certainly wasn't made clear in the conversation.
Well, it's kind of up to the assessor on whatever it is that you have, if, if, if he objects, which he has every right to do, and we don't, we don't consider it. Uh, if he says, well, it's okay, well, it's, it's, it's okay.
Okay, well, that's, uh, again, that was not, certainly wasn't explained, but the, the basis of it, we, we did receive the appraisal from the, from the assessor, and it's certainly confusing to me. It looks to me like he took our property and then found comps, and basically adjusted the comps to match our property value, rather than showing the comps to derive the property value from ours. And that, that may be a legitimate way to do it in the appraisal world, it certainly seems backwards to me. But more importantly, when I look at the county records on the WP-50s for, uh, all the homes in the neighborhood, in the, in our neighborhood, and I think there were five of them, four or five of them that he used in his appraisal. When he did, on his appraisal, trying to, again, looking like, try to match up to mine, uh, his assessment, his market value assessment in those cases came in an average of twenty-two percent higher than what the county had already assessed him for the 2023 market value, not appraised value, but market value. So to me, there appears to be a pretty significant discrepancy in the methodology that's being used for the overall appraisals and then the one-off appraisal. Uh, so, based on that, it appears to me that the, that the appraisal's in excess.
Let me ask, let me ask you this. Did you purchase this property in, in 2022?
Yes, sir.
In June?
Yes, sir.
And for 1.232 million?
Yes, sir.
Which is what the assessor is assessing the value.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but to understand what we do here, on January first, we try and determine what the market value was. In other words, what would a willing buyer pay a willing seller in an arms-length transaction? The most compelling evidence to determine that is going to be, what was it purchased for? Now, if it was purchased back in 2015, well, then, uh, it, it has less significance, although we know that the value is not any less than that unless there's something really going on.
Well, there's something really going on, interest rates, the market has softened, interest rates have come up.
That's, that's true since January first.
But that was as of January first, the market had softened. There had been a couple of properties in the neighborhood that were listed and retracted because there were no takers.
Yeah.
After, before January first, the property with the exact same floor plan as ours was listed at 1.09 million. It closed last week for 1.032. So again, the exact same floor plan, same age, same amenities, same lot size. Uh, as of January first, the listing indicates that the market had softened, and the others, and then on top of that, the, the assessor using, uh, say, I've got a bunch of numbers here. But when you take the land value, the land value is being used at 70,500 across all of them, so that's been consistent. So the only thing that should be changing is the value of the improvements on the land. So equalizing for that is where I derive that it's in excess of. And yeah, the purchase price we all paid, you know, and that's, that's how I understand your comments about the market, I really do. But, uh, you know, I believe the market has changed, and it had changed before the first year, and was going down. So like I say, it doesn't seem to be consistent in the individual appraisal versus the bulk appraisal, so I'm however many properties that is, we can look at the market value, so it's probably, uh, I would argue that it is probably closer to the 2022 assessed value or the proposal we made to the board, I mean, to the informal protest of, uh, 1.0825 than the 1232 that the appraiser had suggested.
Mr. Sparling, when you, when you purchased that home, did you pay more than they, they were asking for?
Yes, sir, we did. We, we had moved back to Oklahoma, we were basically tax-free, we're east of Texas, and we had tried to buy six houses down there, paying, offering up to a hundred thousand more, so we kind of came in blinded by the light. But, yeah, we did offer more than the, paid more than the asking price.
What, what was the asking price?
Uh, 1.2.
Double eight?
Yeah. So somewhat victims of our own success, I guess.
We're hearing a lot of that.
Anything else?
No, sir, that's, actually, I have a bunch of numbers and comparisons that, that I think justify the, the lower appraisal, but, uh, you, you can't accept that.
Did, did you, did anything else sell in, in 22? Are you talking about?
I'm not aware of any other sales in, in that neighborhood in 2022. There was a house that was listed, uh, for some number of months and never, well, had an offer and fell through. Uh, but I don't, let's see, which one was it?
What's the age of your house?
Uh, I believe it was built in 2015, so seven and a half, eight years old.
This is Abbey Place?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm familiar with them.
Okay.
And you're sitting on two acres?
Two point four seven, or they're all, they're all within a few tenths of that. And they'll say, if you look, looking at the WP-50s, the, the land value is consistent on all the properties in that neighborhood.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, I think that summarizes it, I mean, we can talk about details, but I don't want to bore you with.
All right, well, we'll hear from the assessor now.
So here's the location of the property. We've got Sorger Mill up north, Coffee Creek south, in between Midwest and Air Depot, just to the east of 35. It's not a very, you know, homogenous neighborhood, so we have to, you know, we're pulling up as many sales as we can to, you know, come up with, you know, supporting, but, you know, the fact that he paid what he did for it, and that's what we did, initially lower him down to, um, and yeah, we did use the subject property as the anal, in our analysis in the initial comps. And if you want to talk about time trend, what it would sell for, when you do the time trend plus all the adjustments, we're looking at, um, 1,265,085 dollars. Um, and then, if you're looking at the average of the, uh, you know, prop, the value of not using him, he comes down at 1,215,000, so it's slightly, um, less than what we put him on at, but there's no way we can, um, you know, support anything other than the fact that he did pay what he did pay for it, and that's where we believe he should be at, and we did initially have him higher.
Yeah.
But, um, that's just where we're at, and then, uh, I did a, I did another kind of a screenshot of my, from my own doing, just to kind of, you know, see what's going on, to make sure everything was, you know, good. And I'm not using his value whatsoever, and, and my own research for today, using five comps that have the best adjustments, I'm using, you know, a few, a 22 sale, and then a, a couple back from, and then four from 20, I show, uh, uh, supporting a value of 1,250,500 dollars. And that's using the best, uh, comps possible, requiring very few adjustments. And like I said, you're not going to find a lot of, you know, homes in this area because of how small it is. But regardless, we currently support where he's currently at right now, and that's even after lowering it.
Anything else?
And I've got a, if you need, if you, if, if anyone needs to see a picture of the house, or, um, I've got that pulled up, if that's, the board wants to.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, because what I've got is black. I think, oh, that's the inside.
Yep, so. So there's the, obviously the outside.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sparling, you have a beautiful home, though.
Thank you.
So yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's, okay, we got, that's our idea.
Right.
Anybody else on the board, do you see any more?
I, you're asking 1,082,500, right?
I think that is, is the, uh, basically in the median or the average of the market assessment would be it.
And did you, to, to arrive at that figure, you, did you use some 23 sales?
Uh, there is one 23 sale, but it, it is so low, it really doesn't come into it. What I primarily used was in the WP-50s and the 2023 market valuation that was posted by the county assessor. You, when you adjust it for the land value, which is the same for all the properties regardless of size, and you calculate the dollars per square foot of the improvements, the maximum was our home at 236. The minimum was 201, this recent sale was actually at 196, so, again, that just shows you the market's going down, but kind of discounting that. The average was 218 a square foot, uh, which instead of the 1082 would be, uh, the market value of 1149 using what appears to be the methodology that the county uses, at least in, in doing these in bulk. And I guess that would be the question that I would have for the assessor is why, why the two methodologies? When most of the properties are being valued at one way, and yet, uh, once the informal protest started, you, you begin a completely different process, which is 20% higher, or results in a number that's 20% higher, I should say.
Well, we.
You aim for that.
We only use, we only have one methodology of how we, you know, do values, and we make adjustments for, um, everything that you see here, plus his house is among the biggest of sales going back to 2020. Also, he's got a pool where a lot of the other comparables don't have pools.
I've actually adjusted for the pools based on the valuation that's shown in the WP-50, all those dollars per square foot numbers include that. So again, uh, in what I've called the discrepancies in assessed values, there are five homes in the neighborhood. I think they were all used on this 2023 report. 6801 Gentry Circle, 4624 West Cut, 4517 Abbey Circle, 6817 Gentry, 7032 Abbey Place. And again, comparing, I think, is this the WP-50, is that what you call it?
Yes.
Comparing the market value on the WP-50 versus the market value in the 23 February report, actually, the discrepancies range from 15% to 31%, so an average discrepancy, 22%. So there's an inconsistency in the methodology here that doesn't seem fair to me. Uh, it should be one way or the other. And so again, if you take the average or the median, or we can argue those things, but, uh, again, the 23 proposal, we had argued, or I had argued for the, the 2022 assessment, but if you look at the average, uh, based on the WP-50 market value assessment, that would come in at 1149,171, I believe.
Okay. I think we understand what your argument is.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, sir, I think.
This piece of property, anything else from the assessor?
No, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and, uh, close the hearing on BOE 21. What happens here is Friday, we will, the board will convene. You're welcome to be here if you want, but it's just, we don't take evidence, we just simply decide what we think the market value of this home is. Uh, and then we will send the letter out, you'll get it Saturday or Monday, depending on the mail. And, uh, that's pretty much.
Okay.
How, how we stand. Uh, all right, I'm going to go ahead and close the BOE 21, I appreciate your argument, Mr. Sparling, it was well presented. And, uh, as I said, we'll, we'll have a letter going out Friday.
Okay, I think the board first can.
You bet. You, did you have anything else?
No.
Sorry.
Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to open up the hearing on BOE number 45, which is the property at 6204 Waterford Boulevard, number, unit number 41. Uh, Dana Lilly.
So.
Is that phone?
He is going to be joining us by phone, yes, I'm calling him right now. Seven, seven, four, two, seven, 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 zero, two, zero. All right.
This is Dana.
Yeah, Mr. Lily, this is Patrick Crowley, chairman of the Board of Equalization. We, uh, we are now considering your property on Waterford Boulevard, unit number 41. Uh, have you appeared before the board before?
I have not.
Okay. It, it, we're pretty informal, but, you know, the first thing we'll do is we'll want to listen to what you want to tell us about your property and how you arrived at your value, and then we'll hear from the assessor. Uh, after the assessor has presented his evidence, you'll have an opportunity to respond to that, okay?
Okay, that sounds great.
All right, let's, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, uh, start it off with, you have the property at 6204 Waterford Boulevard, unit number 41, correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay, tell us what you want us to know about this property.
Um, and, and I don't know if you have a, I provided to Garrettty Hamilton, just a plain, simple word document. I don't know if you have that in front of you or not.
Okay, I tell you, we have everything that was presented at the informal hearing. We do not.
Okay.
We do not consider any evidence that was not presented at the informal hearing.
Okay, okay.
This is an appeal from that, uh, informal hearing, so.
Okay, yeah, so.
Look at the evidence that you presented there, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, I did receive a notice that my market value increased from 22 to 23 by 32%, 32 and a half percent. Um, I did do a, and I, I guess it's called an informal appeal, and that, um, the fair cash value was decreased from 369,000 to 338,000. Um, and at that point, I did receive information on the five comps that the assessor used for, uh, my property. So if I take a look at the sales price, average sales price of those, those five units were, which is exactly the same square footage and the same complex as my condominium, that averaged 310,000 dollars. The adjusted sale price, um, increased to, the average was three, almost 342,000 dollars versus the sales price. But what I did is what I looked at, because I, I know the market fluctuated considerably last year. I took, um, the last comp, which was actually the same month that I closed on mine, was the sale price was 295, and the adjusted sale price remained the same at the 295. So that's what I based off of my assessment of that there was some fluctuation between the sales price and the adjusted sales price. But I put, if I look at the most current comp, the same month of last year, which was October, the sales price didn't adjust it. So that's what I came to my conclusion, and I guess a request is, um, for my fair market value to be at the 295. One thing I don't know, these condos were built in 1984, um, and there are, and I've not been in any of the other, the comps that were listed, um, there have been a lot of upgrades in, in, in that complex that I'm aware of. I'm not for sure that there was upgrades since 1984, but I know in, at least in mine, that the only upgrade that in our condo is we have a new flooring in the downstairs, and the kitchen is remodeled. Um, that is the extent of the upgrades that I know of since, um, probably since 1984. I'm assuming it's the original cabinets, the lighting, um, and those type of things. So that's really what I was looking at, um, just to kind of recap is the last comp was 295. The adjusted sale price was not increased and remained the same at the 295.
All right, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Lily, you have, this is board member Brett Towne. Did you, when did you purchase the condo?
I purchased it, uh, 10, uh, October 31st, uh, 2022.
Okay.
And what did you pay for it?
275.
And what are you asking for the valuation to be, 295, you said?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
So yeah, this was a October of '22 purchase, but it was an invalid sale because it was between related parties. Um, and for the 275, yeah, we did have it, uh, the initial value, we did have where it was at, and we did lower it. Um, and we used, the comps that we used for the report were all, um, the same square footage, and that's where we're coming in to support that value, and then last year's value was on at 295.5. Um, but that's, you know, that was as of January 1st that year, so, um, but yeah, we, we just, the comps support where he was at, and we didn't, of course, lower him initially. The home does have a remodel on it back in 2007, so we have a, it's a much newer than some of the other condos because it had been updated. Um, but yeah, that's, that's currently where we sit at, originally at 369, now at 338, and we don't see any reason else to lower.
Okay, anything else?
Not at this current moment.
You listed an invalid, you listed it as an invalid sales, explain.
Anytime, it's not a willing buyer, willing seller.
Right.
Because it's between related parties.
Okay.
So, but not, not, not everyone is acting in their best interest when it comes to the value, so they more, more, more or less got a good deal for the property. It wasn't, you know, uh, the value wasn't truly, uh, accurate based on, you know, the market.
It's not what we call an arms-length transaction.
Yes, correct, not an arms-length transaction.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, sir, no, I do want to, I do want to, uh, point out that, um, the homeowner did provide some comparables. He circled some, and this, this was presented to us during the informal appeal, and I thought, okay, well, let me, um, do some research of my own, and I polled the comp report, and we come up with, based on the ones that he provided, that had the same square footage.
Do you want to see it circle here?
Yes, correct. And I come up with a median value of 344,824 dollars. And that's using the, uh, time-adjusted sale price with the adjustments in the, the market trend. That's where the value is coming from.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir, sorry, sorry.
All right, um, um, Mr. Lily, did you hear the assessor?
I did.
Okay, uh, you can respond to the assessor if you'd like.
No, I, I don't, um, no, I, you know, I did provide the comps, um, and I don't know, I mean, and I, I'm just a homeowner. I don't know the, how it's derived as far as from the sales price to an adjusted sales price, where some, you know, went up significantly, and then, like I said, the last comp stayed the same. Um, I, I don't know the rationale between the, behind, you know, why the sales price and then what the adjusted sales price, what that difference is. Uh, but like I said, the last comp that I'm using, the sales price and the adjusted sales price remain constant.
Okay, anything else?
That is it.
Uh, any questions from the board?
No.
Okay, all right, uh, Mr. Lily, uh, we will meet again, the board will, Friday, and we will see what we, if the market value is, or what we come to an agreement as to the market value is of your property, and then we will send the letter out Friday, you'll get it Saturday or Monday, depending on the mail, okay?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you, good presentation.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close BOE number 45. We'll open up BOE number 48, which is the property at 420 North Coast Road in Midwest City. Uh, Jesse Palfrey is the trustee. Uh, Jesse Palfrey is the trustee, and, uh, Rosemary Palfrey Revocable Trust, it appears. And I presume you're the trustee?
I am, may I approach the table, sir?
You bet, come, come, have a, have a seat. Looks like you have two properties, actually, one Midwest City, one Dell City, that's the last two I think we got on our agenda. All right, um, your property at four-twenty North Post Road, right?
Yes.
And you are?
Jesse Palfrey.
Jesse Palfrey, okay.
Trustee, uh, the Rosemary Palfrey Revocable Trust.
Gotcha, all right. Uh, let's see, the assessor, what is it, what, where are you at, assessor? I've got a big question mark here. What, what's your value?
Oh, we have it on for twenty-seven thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-two.
Okay, twenty-seven thousand two, what?
Se, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-two.
Okay. Cause I had twenty-seven thousand eight-eighteen.
Sorry, we do have, um, I'm sorry, twenty-seven thousand eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars is correct.
Oh, is it? Oh, I'm sorry, I had, I wrote it down wrong then.
All right, well,
Could you go to the left a little bit?
As things would happen, I was right. Okay, uh, actual value I had, and let's see, and Mr. Palfrey, I believe you're asking us to set the value at nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-three?
I have two-seven.
Okay. Uh, that's a far cry from the assessor's value, so.
It sure is, Mr. Crowley.
All right, let's, uh,
Two-thousand-seven eight-eighteen, yeah, good.
Okay, have we decided?
Yeah, twenty-seven thousand eight-eighteen.
Twenty-seven eight-eighteen, okay. Good, I'll just, that's the biggest number I had here.
Yes, yes.
I want to kind of redo it, all right. Uh, Mr. Palf, Palfrey, tell us what you want us to know about this property.
So, the important thing to keep in mind about this piece of property is that it's not a licensed, uh, zoned road, it's actually a dirt road, it's not a county road, it's not a paved road, it's actually landlocked, is what we consider in the real estate business, and.
Is this original property?
It's just a unmolested piece of property, one-point-zero-three acre.
Oh, it's just acreage?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
One-point-zero-three acre, unmolested, it's on a dirt road, not even a county road, not even a paved road. So, in, in the eyes of an investor or even real, real estate, we call that landlocked. And we've owned it for a number of years, and, um, when you look at the value, last year, this is about a three-hundred percent increase in value. Last year, they had it, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Market value looked like ninety-five eight-eighty-eight, if I'm looking at the correct thing, cause down here where it says, your NOB said, uh, twenty-nine one-one-five the year before. And it never really caught my eye until, um, you know, I reviewed the, uh, NOB here for a three-hundred percent increase. And I just do the informal appeal just as required, and had a brief conversation, uh, with them, and we didn't, we really couldn't agree on anything, there was no meeting of the mind. Uh, as an investor, I've offered this property for sale for, for many people that come to me, is we don't own just this one property, you may or may not know, I mean, we, we have several holdings throughout the city and the county, and a couple of other counties. But it's difficult for me to, um, promote selling a one-point-zero-three acre unmolested property on a non-street that's landlocked, that, you know, I'm paying taxes on nine-thousand dollars something, I've tried to sell it several times for fifteen thousand, I can't get any great takers. And now the city wants me, or the county wants me to say that it's now worth thirty thousand dollars because of another sale that took place a year or so ago.
All right, you said it's a landlocked.
Yes.
Uh, is, is there no road that leads into it?
So if you look just north of the property line there, you see my box, right? Right there, if you take your cursor right there and go left and right? Uh, may I, may I go up there and show you?
Yeah, sure.
So, when you actually look at, this is, um, and quite often I get, uh, letters in the mail from violations from the city for four-twenty North Post. I think this is actually four-twenty North Post, but this is another four-twenty North Post, if you look up in the county records, there's two. And this road right here is just a dirt road, and it comes back through here, all the way here, and I think it accesses this house back here, but it's not a county road, it's not a city road, it's not paved, it's just dirt. And so, when we look at the address, it's four-twenty North Post Road, it's not an address right here on this dirt. So in order.
It's not actually landlocked, it has a dirt road going, good.
Sure.
Okay.
So, so I can understand that, but who owns the road? Are they gonna restrict my access?
So you don't know whether you have a permanent easement, access easement, or anything?
No, I don't know, and, and forgive me for my ignorance on that, I've only been doing this for six years, but, um, it, I mean.
Why, why did you buy this?
Uh, it was purchased, uh, a long time ago at a, a sale, tax sale. My previous private servicer bought lots of property at tax sales.
And sold in twenty-fifteen, is that not accurate?
Well, twenty-fifteen is when, uh, the trust actually, uh, took over, um, made a large transaction from Omega Enterprises, and Omega Enterprises was another entity that had a partner in it. And Omega Enterprises is the one that bought it from the county tax sale in two thousand and twelve. And, um, uh, one of the partners was, was failing in health, previous District Judge, Judge Myers, and he was half-owner of Omega Enterprises, so they divested everything into the Rosemary Palfrey Revocable Trust, which I am now the trustee of, so. Um, and that was a group purchase. Did that answer your question?
Where did you, where did you, where was the purchase price in two thousand and twelve? I know it was at a tax sale, so that's not a.
Yeah, it doesn't show here, and I don't have those records with me.
It wouldn't be a valid sale anyway, right, those tax sales?
I, I, I show a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, and I don't know where that came from.
Well, it's actually a one-point-two million dollar, it was a contract for several properties.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's an invalid sale because it was a multiple property sale, mini-sale, so yes.
Okay.
You don't own anything contiguous?
No.
Okay.
Well, and actually, I, I submitted to the, the, the informal appeal, that piece of property where his red cursor is right now, that's valued about nine-thousand dollars an acre for the three-point-eight acre. So if I'm trying to sell my piece of property for twenty-seven thousand, and they can get three-point-eight acres, two-point-eight more acres for an extra seven thousand dollars, that doesn't seem fair to me as a taxpayer.
What's on the property?
Trees, unmolested.
Zoned agriculture.
I don't know, is it zoned?
Or not zoned, uh,
It's classification.
Classification.
Yeah, they use classification for residential.
It's residential, okay.
The nearest house is the one you pointed out.
Uh, well, there's one on the left, if you, if you look two spaces still right there, and then the one that's close to, I think it's four-hundred North Post Road, and then the, the upside-down L there is also four-twenty North Post Road, that one's also, I believe, four-twenty, yeah. So there's two addresses for four-twenty North Post Road.
Well, let me tell you, I took the census, and the address is where the mailbox is. So if the mailbox for that property is sitting over there, that's why it's the.
We don't even have a mailbox.
That's, no, that's, that's what the address is.
I, I understand.
Of course.
Well, it can't be four-twenty owned by different people, like, I don't make.
Um, yes, it's somebody.
It's two-four-twenty.
Somebody probably wants to own that.
I, po, probably, yeah. And my also comparison is if you go slightly to the right over two properties, then one down, that one, the bigger one right there, it's also unmolested to the right with your cursor.
This one?
Yes. It's, it's a bit larger, but still averages, um, nine thou, it's unmolested, not developed, it also averages, it averages ten-thousand-two-fifty-four acre.
According to the assessor?
According to your twenty-twenty-three assessor value. I would love to sell it for thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
So we had to account for two things, we had to account for the topography because it was in poor topography, had a lot of trees, it wasn't readily buildable, buildable. We also had to account for size. And this is what, uh, this graph shows, I'm sorry, I didn't title it, but that was.
Okay, I got a copy of it.
But, uh, so down here, you'll see the acreage, and then on the left, you'll see the price per acre according to the acreage. So these were based on comparable sales, are the dots. As you see, as it increases in acreage, the price per acre goes down. So he's lined up at about one acre, so that's, uh, price per acre between thirty-eight and forty thousand an acre. Uh, we have him on right now for, that's where about that number, twenty-seven thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-two an acre after we accounted for the port topography. I think the base for that right now is actually for one acre, only thirty-four thousand an acre, and we gave a further adjustment down to twenty-seven thousand an acre.
Okay, I, I took twenty-seven thousand eight-eighteen.
Yes, yeah, I have twenty-seven thousand two-seventy-two per acre, which comes out to a total value of two thou, twenty-seven thousand eight-eighteen.
One-point-zero-two.
So that means this is near Ringo and Post Road.
Yes.
And are there utilities on any of those posts? Are, would it be well and septic?
Uh, there's no septic or well at this time, we'd have to drill a well or extend city utilities out there.
Do you know what the neighbors have?
No, I do not. Is this an opportunity for me to address what they presented?
Well, we need to make sure that the.
We did, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, so I was just trying to explain why the larger acreages have a lower price per acre.
Right, I understand that. Um, would you go back to the graph for me, please? Sorry. Okay, so, um, I studied this very well, I, I have a science degree by nature, even though I'm an investor now, and we have an anomaly here, if you look at this piece of property that sold in two thousand and eighteen, you have half an acre that sold for thirty thousand. Well, that ideally would push you up to sixty-seven thousand dollars a, a, an acre. You've got three acres here that sold in two thousand and nineteen for ninety thousand dollars, so that puts about thirty thousand dollars an acre. I'm basing my, my formal appeal here, um, on the fact that when you look at the light property, if you go back to the topography map, I would appreciate it, sir. If you look at the topography of, of light property, I'm not sure where these acres are that, that, that sold, um, and none in two, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, these are all previous to that year. You look at the light property, heavily wooded, no utilities, the one right around it that's three-point-eight acres is valued at thirty-six thousand dollars total. Um, as a person going to buy a piece of property, if I'm looking, I look at Rosemary Palfrey Revocable Trust property there for twenty-seven or thirty thousand dollars that the, the county thinks that I should pay taxes on, versus the one right behind it that has two-point-eight acres more for an extra seven or eight thousand dollars, that's a no-brainer for, for, for any common sense thing. So I don't know how that could be an accurate and true representation of market value. I mean, yes, you have the anomaly up there, the half acre that sold for thirty-seven thousand dollars, I understand that. Um, if I could sell that property for sixty thousand dollars, I, I'll reduce it to fifty-five, who, who wants to take it? So I'm just, I just live in the real world, and I, 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 I'm not here because I expect to pay less money on my taxes, I'm here to get a, a sure estimate of what the value of the property is. And when you are dealing with real estate transactions, they look at what the county assesses the property values at, and they take that into consideration. So now they may say, well, it's valued at thirty thousand dollars, I might be getting a deal for fifteen thousand dollars, maybe? I don't know that, I mean, that, that's conjecture in the future. Again, it's not gonna much, you know, whether you mark it down to the ten thousand or fifteen thousand, I mean, my taxable value, I think, is right at ten thousand and sixty-seven dollars, so it's not about saving me money, it's about trying to give a clear picture to prospective buyers out there of what the actual value is.
So, but you want us to say nine-thousand-nine-hundred?
That was my proposal based on the averages.
Well, but, um, it was ninety-five, almost ninety-six a year ago. Did you, you didn't complain, right?
I didn't see, I didn't address it at the time, yes, ma'am.
So you, you wouldn't account for any increase in value over the ninety-five, or you?
So again, when you look at methodology, is there methodology, and I did my methodology, the average that I found that would be ninety-five eighty-eight based on those two comps that I gave you. But I'm fine keeping it at the ten thousand sixty-seven. I, I understand we need to adjust for increases in market, things of that nature, but a three-hundred percent increase, I just don't understand where the methodology came for that.
What was it, what was the value last year?
Nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-eight, nine-five-eighteen.
Oh, okay. That's, I, I got that number.
Oh, I, I believe what I proposed was nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven, is that what you have, Ms. Thompson?
I have nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-three.
Oh, okay, that's what, yeah. So that's a little high, yeah, I have that on here as well, so.
Okay.
That was slightly above the average, the average was nine-thousand-seven-sixty-seven. Not sure how I made the adjustment, but I came at ninety-nine sixty-three.
That's what you're asking us to say today?
I'm asking for that or anything close to that. Again, my taxes are ten, my assessed tax value is ten thousand and sixty-seven. Um, I think that's well right in the ballpark, but I can't come here and say, oh, I think it's worth ten thousand sixty-seven when I did my methodology and it didn't come up with that number, so I'm, I'm somewhat flexible. I mean, uh, I'm also a realist, so, not trying to ask for anything that I don't think is, is common sense here.
I understand. Anything else you want to tell us?
No, thank you.
Assessor, anything else you want to tell us about this property?
Um, I would just want to say that I did want, use one of the port topography comparables, uh, in there. Um, it was a property to the south, and he did say it sold for, uh, what was it? Nine, thirty-six thousand at nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-three an acre? But, uh, that piece of property is two acres larger than his, so I had to try to account for that.
Okay. Yeah, I have, I got a professor that I, I should know, but I really don't, or then I do know is that you go north to Ten Street there, and Caddy Corner, that's murder one, and it's, it's defined as that because it's an extremely dangerous part of Midwest City. Uh, now, when I was a cop, you were safe anywhere, but, eh, you're not, cause I'm not a cop there, well. Uh, so I don't know the value of this property, as you said, there's a dirt road that goes in there to it, it's just an acre sitting there.
Is the bump essentially because of one sale? For?
Uh, no, I have four sales that, uh, count for it, I don't know why the, nah, I don't know what accounted for the jump necessarily. Uh, I think there was, uh, an appeal in the past before, if you go to the notes. I think we had it valued high, higher at one point, appealed it, and then the appeal got approved, and there was an adjustment. So I think that's why the jump didn't happen the first time, if I'm right.
An informal appeal?
Yes, an informal appeal, an, an informal appeal. I think we did try to, uh, raise this value one time in the past, and I think we're trying to do it again. I think that's what it is. That's why there's such a big jump, because I think we were trying to raise it four years ago, and we couldn't.
Why not?
I don't think that we had the sales to support it at the time, we only maybe had like one or two sales to support it, so we didn't think that, that was fair. I, I'm, I'm speculating, though, I wasn't here at that time.
Okay. So, he's pertaining that, in the subsequent, what, four or five years?
Yeah, in the four or five years, I think, mm-hmm, that's what I, that's what I'm gathering from the data that I collected in the area, just off of the sales. Yes, sir.
It's, it's about triple.
Yeah, it surprised me too, but I have to go off of the numbers.
Sure, oh, I understand, you know, you guys, you guys have a, a, a unique job, you're trying to do what's fair for the whole county, and that, that becomes a little bit of a problem. But this is just a unique piece of property. I don't think I've ever seen one in front of the board before like this.
Right.
And it's not landlocked necessarily, cause, but we don't know.
Yeah, it has access, it isn't the best of access, for sure, but it does have access.
It, but is that dirt road? The county road, or is it Midwest City?
Uh, not sure, I didn't.
Or is it owned by somebody?
I'm not sure about that, that's a good question.
And, uh, it would absolutely make. And, uh, it would absolutely make the difference on the value of this property, because if that's owned, it'd have to have an easement, which may or may not be granted.
Right.
Uh, which would make the acreage essentially useless.
Go down that corner.
This is the house.
Yeah. There's dirt roads and then there's dirt roads.
Yeah, right, and there's a jeep road.
Yeah, that's the four hundred North Post and the four twenty North Post right there, that that's the cleared area.
Your acreage is on that?
Way back there, yeah.
If we're assuming that the house at the end has access, I have to assume that, uh, Mr. Pelfer also has access as well.
Yeah, well, and that's what, we're all just making that assumption apparently, we don't have any evidence to support one way or the other.
And my response to that is, I don't know.
Right.
Maybe y'all don't know either.
Right.
But in the eyes of transactions, I know, I have to know that if I'm selling a piece of property, they have legal right to get to the piece of property, so that would take further investigation and and explo- exploring on our part, and that's, you know, I'm willing to do that. Um, to one of your comments is that, uh, last year it didn't go up. You said two years ago you tried to go up somewhat, um, but that recent sale, your most recent sale, I think, was in two thousand?
Twenty-one. Yeah, it's hard to find vacant land sales just vacant, I was trying to compare apples to apples. So I have two choices, I could either expand the date range, or I can expand the area, and I think the area was more important than, yeah, exactly.
And what I would propose, I'm sorry.
Good.
No, you're right.
What I would propose to the board is that had this been, um, a one point zero three acre on a paved street that had city utilities and was cleared and ready to build on it, I I I could see a thirty to forty thousand dollar value on it.
Yeah, I think, uh, one acre is going for forty thousand, and, uh, right now it is going for forty thousand, it was perfect. If it was, uh, had paved streets, uh, if it was, eh, you know, in a area that was normal for the neighborhood, then it would be at forty thousand an acre.
Well, yeah, if it had water, gas, and.
Right.
And a paved road.
And we have them at twenty-seven thousand acre, trying to account for the port topography.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
That's it.
I think that concludes my presentation, and thank you for hearing it.
Okay, well, this is a, this is a good security piece of property.
It is pretty unique.
Hopefully y'all see it warranted me being here today.
Okay. Uh, we've got nothing else, uh, this particular piece of property. Four twenty North Post, BOE number forty-eight. I'll close the hearing on that and open up the hearing on BOE forty-nine, I believe, it's spelled free, this is your property too, or your trust.
And we're talking about three, 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 northeast twentieth street?
Southeast twentieth court, yeah, sorry. Uh, hopefully it's not on dirt road.
It's not, no, 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 there's actually a house there, so that's, that's exciting, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too, thank you.
All right, now, we'll hear from you first, and then we'll hear from the assessor.
Sure, so as a result of the informal appeal, they did reduce it from one twenty-five to one twenty. Um, I I I had several appeal appeals, this was the one that I just, I I couldn't agree to in in good conscience as a business owner, because, um, using their methodology and their data points, I own a house that is literally two blocks north at three one, uh, three two three. So this property is three, 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 southeast twentieth, and I own the property at three two three, southeast eighteenth street. And if you wanna get a visual of what that looks like, as far as separation, um, the property that's in question that I'm appealing is this, this property right here, my other property's right there.
Okay.
Same neighborhood?
Same neighborhood, two streets over, two blocks literally. And, uh, and I also brought a house that is, that's for sale, that looks like it's it's, um, in processing, I don't know the exact wholesale price, I just know they had tried to sell it for seventy thousand, they reduced it to six, nine thousand, and it says offer pending, I don't know what the, it's not been made record what, but anyways.
I've got, I've got a seven thirty-one of fifteenth, is that when you purchased this property?
That was, again, non-arm's-length transaction, it was an investor of Omega Enterprises and then put into the trust, and that was for the grand sum total of the one point two million dollars.
Okay, I was gonna say, I don't think this property is going to be worth one point two million dollars.
I don't think so. If it was, I'll sell it for one point one.
All right, uh, then you don't know, we don't have anything that sets the value of this property as far as your purchase price?
No, my taxable market value for twenty-two was seventy-nine thousand three eighty, and I I think that's, you know, a good range. I I proposed a value of sixty-five two twenty-eight, uh, with my methodology compared it to my other house going for likeness to likeness and per square foot. Um, I just figured if if the methodology that the county is using affected my house on Eighteenth Street as it affected my house on Twentieth Street, why such discrepancy?
You've done, if you said I did not get it, what was the house on twen- on on Eighteenth Street?
Eighteenth Street is valued for twenty twenty-three at fifty-five thousand five hundred, which, if you break it down by square foot, is a value of fifty-one dollars and twenty cents a square foot. And that had increased from forty-eight thousand, uh, the year before.
This property in three, 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 southeast twentieth court.
Twentieth Street.
Twentieth Street?
Yes.
Okay, and do you live in that house?
No, no, it it's a rental property.
Okay, and what's the rent?
The rent on that house is, uh, eight seventy-five, I believe.
Square feet?
Square footage of that house is twelve hundred and seventy-four. And if you times the twelve seventy-four by the fifty-one twenty off of my other house, that gives you the sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-eight number. Um, and I was receptive to what the county had to say about, um, or the assessor, the county had to say about that it's brick. It is in fact brick, unlike, uh, the house there on Eighteenth Street. I don't know that justifies, um, nearly an eighty percent increase in property value in the last four years. In twenty twenty, the the assessor had a seventy-two thousand dollars, and in twenty twenty-three, they assessed it at a hundred and twenty-five, nearly fifty thousand dollars more, and then they, because it was a rental, um, you know, was trying to meet with, meet me in the middle and reduce it to one twenty.
Did you, so, did you, the one we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
On twentieth is twenty-one hundred square feet?
No, no, ma'am, it is, uh, one thousand two hundred and seventy-four square feet. That would be a very good question if it was two thousand square feet.
And the eight hundred seventy-four? Okay, and the eight hundred seventy-five rent, is that Eighteenth Street or Twentieth?
That is Twentieth Street, Eighteenth Street's currently vacant.
Okay.
And the house on Eighteenth Street rents for eight twenty-five. It's an extra fifty dollars because the house on Twentieth Street has an extra bedroom versus it's a two-bedroom on Eighteenth Street.
Well, one is brick.
One is brick, and if you're telling me if I spend fifteen thousand dollars to brick in Eighteenth Street, it's gonna adjust my market value of fifty thousand dollars, well, that seems like a wise investment.
Hello? All right, anything else you want to tell us about this breached property?
I'm satisfied at this point, ready to hear from this.
Okay, assessor?
Okay, I just have, he he did bring up, um, his other property, and I'm just showing that right now. This has had no major updates to it or anything in that matter, but the subject property, what we're here for today, let me pull that one back up. We have it as a much, um, we kinda have it as a much newer, a little bit newer, because there's been a bit of a remodel that has been done on it. And we have a, that back in two thousand eleven, we've got a little bit of a remodel on it for some exterior work, and so the effect of your build on it kinda changes a little bit. But you know, with this area, you know, you're gonna have a lot of, you're gonna have a lot of different types of homes. You're gonna have a lot of, you know, your same kinda setup, but you could have homes that are nearby that might be of better quality and and all that, and it's kind of in a sit, in an area where a lot of things can happen. Newer homes are being built in place of old ones, or old ones are getting remodeled. This is by chance one that has been slightly remodeled in the last.
What is that cross street?
Sorry, here we are, here's South Shields, southeast fifteenth, and here's Central Avenue.
Oh, Central, okay.
Yes, sir. And here's, uh, I thirty-five.
I got you.
Yep.
All right, now I know where it is.
Yep, and we did have initially at one hundred and twenty-five thousand, and we did lower him to one twenty. Now, I did some research on, um, yes, this was a multiple property sale and breaking down, so yeah, invalid arms-length transaction. Um, and based on doing some research, I found that, uh, after breaking down all these property values in that huge transaction, I showed that this one came in at a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and I also, here's the thing too, you can pull comps from that area, and they could be kind of out of, they could be quite big. So what I'm having to do, in my own analysis after the appeal, is pull from some, pull some properties that are very similar in square footage, similar in age. And the comp report that I provided in my analysis by doing all this, I come out with a median value of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars. And I'm like, I'm using square footage that's right around, um, his, and, um, the same quality that we've got him on, and the, uh, the age. There's, there's so many things you can do within this entire area, and you can go out a little bit to kinda find sales to support your value, and we currently can support a value of, uh, one twenty, and that's where we think he's going to be at.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that is it, for now.
All right, anything, uh, in response, Mr. Pelfer?
Yes, I'm actually offended that the assessor would say, going through the transaction, that it was purchased for one twenty. I would like to see supporting documentation supporting that, because I have all the sales data, um, cause multiple properties were 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 sold for the one point two million dollars, I think that's an in, unfactual comment to make, to sway your opinion. If I need to bring the actual sales contract and show where no buyers were assigned, that it was a one group only, I I'd be happy, I know that was going to be brought here today. So I think that's an unfair statement to make, so I don't think I can appropriately rebuttal that without having the documentation here.
Tell me how you arrived at the sales price on both properties without individualizing?
So, uh, Omega Enterprises was owned by my deceased father and Judge Myers, they were fifty-fifty ownership. They would go to the sales together just by properties, and it just kinda started to build. And then when his house started to fail, that was a number that they came up with, which is again, as you defined, a non-arm's-length sale, which is this is what I'm willing to take to get out of 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 the partnership, uh, for his trust, cause he had a trust as well. So it was a dissolution, a dissolution of a partnership, several, I think it was thirty-some properties in in there.
However, if you're getting all of these at the tax sale, there is a, there is a finality to each property.
Sure.
As they're being bid. I understand that it's not arm's length, but it still kinda gives a base price.
Sure, and I could go back through the research and look for that, uh, Ms. Thompson. Uh, the fact of the matter is, Omega bought it at the tax sale for certain, um, certain price. Generally, the the nature of the business, the the normality is you you purchase a piece of property, it's gonna need some improvements of some sort of fashion, and you make those improvements, which costs you more money, obviously, than your actual sales price. Um, uh, and again, I based my number here as as the average for the area. Um, I, you know, I brought this this in that currently, right down the street, same street, three one four, southeast twentieth street, has a pending pri- a a pending contract, and they had lowered the price from, you know, seventy thousand to sixty-nine thousand, it is slightly smaller, so I don't wanna mislead.
But that's a twenty-three?
Correct.
Okay, so, so, you know, we do one-one.
Yes.
One. Um, so your father is standing there, it's a business.
Yep.
And he ends up with six properties. And so you're telling me that Butch Freeman says, just give me the, give me the total price of everything you bought here this day, that's how we're arriving at? No.
No, maybe I can further clarify it for you. Each property is bought individually, it was originally bought by Omega Enterprises for a certain value, I don't have that value in front of me.
Okay.
And it was put in the name of Omega Enterprises LLC, I believe it was an LLC, yeah, LLC. And then upon a number of years, they accumulated a number of properties, I think it was thirty or forty-some properties, and then when Judge Myers decided he wanted to dissolve the partnership and get out, get his part of his financial investment out, whatever that was, whatever profit he would have made, they dissolved and and paid the one point two million dollars to Omega.
That's where that figure came from.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I was, okay. Cause, no, we do have, we we, we went through this last year, cause these hedge funds are getting into the business, and there is this bulk sale, and it's this big figure, but that's not what this was, this was a dissolution gross figure.
Yes, a dissolution gross figure, yes, I'm good now, thank you for the clarification, Ms. Thompson.
Okay, all right, I'm sure the the assessor didn't intend to offend you, but he, what he does is he takes what he believes to be an average of a fair market value of these properties to try and get to a value, and he's got there at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, actually, whether it offends you or not, this is how they, uh, probably, uh, well, I know, come up with this.
Well, perhaps I misspoke, Mr. Crowley. It's not that their figure of one twenty-five or a hundred and twenty offended me. It's what he said, that he went through the bulk sale of the one twenty and decided on, with with, without providing any evidence, how he decided that within that sale, it was purchased from Omega for one, for a hundred and twenty thousand is is is, I believe, factually incorrect.
I got.
That's what offended me, cause I don't see the the documentation or where he came with that figure with that real estate transaction.
Whether it's correct or incorrect, you you object to that value, and that's why we're here.
Well, if thirty or forty properties were bought for one point two million, and what he's saying one is valued at a hundred and twenty, that means at a hundred and twenty, if you took the average, that would be ten properties. Thirty to forty properties were exchanged in that transaction for one point two million, it just monetarily doesn't make sense, and that's one of the lower-end properties, knowing what I know about it. I just think it was an it, and factually a statement to make to persuade you, whether intentional or not, I'm not sure, but I I think I don't have the ability to defend that without having the actual sales contract here in front of me.
We're not easily persuaded.
Okay.
And nothing, nothing I said was to, uh, intentionally, you know, to offend you, that was not my doing, I would not do that. I'm not here to attack you or anything like that, that's not my job, I'm here to present evidence, and if I did factually misspoke, I apologize.
Well, thank you.
I I'm not here to offend you whatsoever, you don't deserve that, so.
I, well, I appreciate the apology, I a hundred percent agree, you're here to do what's best for the county and the assessor's office, and I respect that a hundred percent. Uh, as I I'm a businessperson here, I invest in Oklahoma City County, I'm, uh, Oklahoma County, I invest in Cleveland County, uh, even in Logan County, and so, uh, the more Oklahoma City or Oklahoma County grows, the better off I will do in the long run, I I'm not oblivious to that. Um, when they apply their methodology to one of my houses, literally within walking distance, two blocks away, and they come with a figure of fifty-five thousand dollars, because it doesn't have, and if you actually look at the brick, the brick was not great, it's cracking, it's starting to fall. Um, again, improvements that I have to do. Um, I just don't see that difference between fifty-five thousand and a hundred and twenty thousand.
I understand.
And I think I'll rest my, my.
And I just wanna throw out there that, um, if we go back, we have to go at least back to two thousand eighteen before we get to a value of what he is requesting, and close to that, and since then, you know, or I look at the last year's value, we are at a hundred and eight thousand. And in twenty-one, we are at eighty thousand five hundred, and twenty-twenty, we're at seventy-two thousand. So, well, obviously, we know that the market has drastically changed in the last couple of years, and for one, we are reflecting, uh, the market is changing quite a bit, now, if we see something going downward, we'll account for that at a later time, but for now, we support the value of where it's at, and based on me doing some more research of my own, we definitely support the value of where it's at.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Anything you want?
Well, now that he said something, I feel con- obligated to say something, and that is, um, um, yes, the market has increased over the last few years. Yes, we saw a big bubble, so to speak, in the end of twenty twenty-one, beginning of twenty-two, I I, uh, agree with you in that front. Kinda back to like what I was talking about. Kind of back to like what I was talking about, 420 North Post Road. If I go with my methodology of that, they assessed my other house at 5120 square feet. If I assess this house at 5120 square feet, that's where I come with the 65,000 dollar figure. I don't necessarily, I'm not married to that number because it is bricked. The inside's exactly like the other house. There are, anytime we have tenants move out, we redo some of the sheet rock, we repaint. So I think you guys can understand that as investors, we're not renting a, you know, a dilapidated property. Again, I'm here about flexibility. So when I say 65,000, I have to justify my methodology for it. But when I, if you remember when I first opened up, you know, I think my current taxable market value is 79,000. I think it's, it's worth 79 to 80,000 dollars. You know, because a piece of property is, is worth what someone's willing to pay for, what someone's willing to sell for. And we have a house on the same street that just sold for 60, or presumably 69,000 dollars if they got full ask, as suspended, I don't know. So I, again, just common sense, real estate here is all I'm looking at.
Well, I thought that's what we're here for.
Yes, and I appreciate that, Mr. Crawley.
All right, anything else?
I think I'm good, thank you.
All right. We'll go ahead, I think we've heard from the assessor at the end. 333 Southeast 20th Street, Dell City, BOE number 49. Going to close the hearing on that piece of property. Thank you, Mr. Peltre, for the presentation you gave us a lot to think about.
Thank you.
And.
I did want to make sure you have it correct, you just said Dell City. I own several properties, this is an Oklahoma City address.
Oh, it's in Oklahoma City, well, that makes a big difference. Well, I'm not sure, yeah. Okay, anything else?
That would be Walker, right, like 20th and 11th.
It's between Shields, it's closest cross street is 15th and South Central. But it's between I-35 and, and South Shields.
Yeah, there's the railroad track from St. Louis.
Yes, exactly.
He's a substitute teacher on the south side and I had to hook it on that train catching me.
Well, before we conclude, I'd like to thank Mr. Town, Ms. Thompson, and Mr. Crawley for hearing me and look forward to the results.
Okay, we get the letter go out Friday, but you know what, we've decided.
Yeah, and thank you, sir, I didn't need to offend you.
No, you're good, you're good.
I gotta deal with facts. Thank you guys, have a good day.
All right, closing the hearing on BOE number 49, that's the last piece of property, our salary on our agenda.
Next week is every day, right?
Uh, correct, every day that our office is open will be closed 13th, but we'll have 10th, 11th, 12th, and then decision day 14th. The following week, I haven't sent out agendas for yet, but we will have Monday and Tuesday, 17th and 18th. Decision day will be the 20th, that Thursday. We will, I'm gonna try to have something on the 19th just because, you know, they're flowing in, like we talked about. So trying to take advantage of as many days as we can. But as of now, no one's agreed to the 19th, but whenever those agendas get finalized, I expect probably in the next couple of days, I'll send them out to you.
Okay, and next week, we're Monday, Tuesday?
Correct, yes, every day except for Thursday next week.
Okay.
I'm going to turn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good.
Thank you.